Call the council meeting to order. This is the City Council of Cresco, Iowa. It's September 3rd. Roll call.
Carmen.
President.
Buska.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
Lack on the consent agenda. It consists of approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from August 18th, 2025, approval of the minutes from August 18th, 2025 work session, approval of minutes from August 12th, 2025 goal-setting session corrected, approval of pay request number six for Blazek Corporation for the wastewater treatment plant age-related equipment replacement project for $157,153.38, approval of pay request number four for $67,582.05 to Dave's complete construction for the scene shop project, approval of a flag request for Crestwood Homecoming on September 19th, 2025, and approval of a parade permit for portions of Schroeder Drive, Third Avenue East, and North Elm Street for the homecoming parade on September 19th, 2025. So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Buska.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
Staff reports, public works.
The street department, we had CIT come. They did some televising for us and some storm sewers. That's what we had do the whole town for the sewer plant or for the sewer mains here over the last few years. And we had a collapse up near the old gymnasium from the, near the fitness center. So we started, started down here and televised up towards the east park. We didn't get all the way because it's pretty good up there and found some bad spots along the way. They've got a little vehicle that's all-wheel-drive, I believe, and it drives down the sewer, the sewer. And there was a couple of spots where all of a sudden it drops and they don't know how far it goes down. But obviously, it's not a good spot. Excuse me. It goes under a garage or two and maybe a house along the way, and it's maybe older than, it's probably at least 100 years old in spots. So they're going to send us a video of it and a report, and we'll look at it and see, see what that means and what we need to do. On the same note, on Third Avenue East, if you've been down that in the last day or two, we had a manhole that collapsed a little bit. It was enough where we have to dig it up. There's, there's five pipes coming into that one manhole box, and hopefully, that's put back together tomorrow or the next day, and the street will be opened up again.
Do we have a cement box for that?
I am not 100% sure on that. I guess I didn't ask Lonnie if it's here or where it is, but he thought they'd be done. I believe he thought they were going to be done pretty soon, so. Sewer project out at the wastewater plant's moving along. Nope, they might even be done earlier than projected. They've started on the third clarifier. Once they get that, get that done, there'll be a little more work inside the sewer plant and the basement to do, and for the most part, they'll be done. So that's good. Like I said, that's ahead of schedule a little bit. Our sewer is back to normal, too, after the big rainfall that we had. So that's, I don't know what the forecast is. I guess we got a little surprised yesterday with rain, but I know it's going to be cool, so. 12th Avenue up there, you know, we've talked about that. We're going to be reshaping that, and actually, the county's going to be doing most of that. We have a water service line that crosses the road, and we'll be moving that here pretty soon. And once that's moved, then the county will be, when they're able to do it, then they'll come in and start working on that. So, of course, that's weather-dependent, too.
What are they actually going to do, Dave?
What's that?
What are they actually going to do?
So if you picture the road, the water runs to the inside, so basically, we've got to build it up. At the far north end of North, of North Elm, it tees and the ditch is filled in, and it's a couple of feet higher than the road. So that's going to be dug back out. We'll have a ditch in there, and then they'll reshape the road and...
Still going to be rocky, or they're going to...
Hopefully, we'll be able to seal coat it then. Yeah, we'll probably let it set awhile first, but yeah, so it's weather-dependent, so if it keeps raining, it'll get drug out farther. But yeah, so that's, that's taking, taking shape. Where the water line, it's a service line that goes across to that house across the road, and, and we weren't sure if we were going to be able to get it deep enough. And if we couldn't move that line, then Nick Rissman said there's no use to do anything with the road. So I'm glad we can move it. Then the last thing I've got, along the bike trail going south out of town by a cure there, and we're going to work with the conservation department. They're getting about 30 trees to plant, and then the library's going to put their story walk in there as well. And that'll all happen this fall yet. So the story walk, and Jordan will explain about it, and I can, but basically, it's a book that you can read. I forget how many different pedestals or little kiosks. You'll be able to read it, and then they'll be able to switch it out and stuff like that, too. So that, I think we're going to start working on that here in the next few weeks, so.
Good. No one here from the police?
No.
Did you have a report?
Nope, but he did give me the August report to hand out to you guys.
Thanks. Admin?
We've been busy finishing up the annual reports, the Seventh Street Project and software conversion. Cassell is the name of the new software, and they've started logging in to pull over all of our data, so they usually log in once every day or two, it seems like lately. They're estimating to start with our utilities and payroll on the 24th. We'll be handing out the CIP packets to the department heads this week. Election papers will be accepted until September 18th at 5:00. They can be turned into the auditor's office. 25 signatures are needed, and it's Ward Two at large, and the mayor's position are all up this year. And we did speak with our insurance carrier, EMC, and there'll be no coverage for the water sewer issues under our policy for when we have the rain on the 18th. He did want me to share that with everybody.
Committee updates.
The airport meeting is the same time as this meeting, so I mean, I just know that they're voting on the, the electrical upgrade, $4,200, I think it was, and then basically, they are discussing. I know that we talked to Lick Tags today about them going off, they were trying a mower so that we could see, trying to use a wider mower instead of, you know, Claire's mower that I think it pulls three or four. And he can do his in three and a half hours for, I'm pretty sure, a 6T wide is that that we're talking about?
Can't remember how wide he said it is. It's three different...
It's probably going to be eight or nine hours, just if you've got one machine. Basically, they got Lick Tags to do it because it owes Ross, there's a workout with Ross and garbage, and that, he got them to do it just one time, and it should have been today or tomorrow. They're going to do that.
The housing authority met, I guess it was two weeks ago. They are still in a underfunded situation, so they are not taking anyone off the waitlist, not issuing any more vouchers. So that's an unusual situation, and we're getting port-ins where normally, we get port-outs, where somebody gets on our list, gets a house, lives here a year, and then moves to Chicago, and we end up paying Chicago rent. Now, we've got Chicago or someone paying Howard County rent, so it's kind of an unusual situation. But it's a real interesting situation right now, so. That's it, I guess, for those. We want to recognize Lonnie Lenahan, the street superintendent, who's been with us for seven years. And we'll take comments from the audience, and these comments are not related to one of the agenda items. We can only receive comments. We can't take formal action, and we ask anyone with making a public comment to state their name and address and to speak from the podium.
Yep. If you want to talk, you can come up here, sir.
Okay, City Council, my name is Warren Stephan, and I live on Yankee Avenue, the east side, so I'm not in the city limits. My question is, with the amount of rain we've had this year and the amount of time that you have to mow your lawn, I was wondering if the City Council would consider setting some kind of a fee for out-of-city users to pay to dump their yard waste at the yard waste site? So. And I think, I'm not sure, but I thought there was years ago, a fee that somebody could pay, and it'd be a daily fee. It wouldn't be like a month or nothing like that. It's just a daily fee that I was thinking about, so. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks. Do you have that in city water, sewer services of any kind?
I don't have none, no.
Okay.
I've got my septic tank and well.
All right.
That's an interesting question. So the people who are in the county but get city water, they don't get a yard waste charge?
No.
Okay. Because the problem we ran into before is having, you know, having people come in and pay, or more specifically, using it and not paying.
They had no way to bill them or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
There used to be a sign on the, out there that had a fee. Is that been removed?
I think so, and I don't remember what the numbers were. I probably have a picture of it, but...
I think it was $5 per truckload or something like that.
Yeah, but that went away with the new ordinance.
Okay.
Because the new ordinance has city residents only. Yeah.
So we'd have to change the ordinance to do this.
Yep, yep.
So I don't think we're saying no, but we're saying it's a little problematic, but Dave will think about it.
Do you guys want me to add it to the next agenda?
Yeah.
Good. We've got some other issues that need to be dealt with first.
I know, I know, I don't remember the conversation, and I suppose we could go back and maybe watch meetings, but before we changed it to what it is now, it was that way, and I know we had a reason why we changed away from it. I just don't remember what it is, so.
I'll be, because most people don't pay the fee.
Yeah, I don't remember hardly anybody ever coming in and paying for it, but...
And the fact that City Council's, or City Hall is only open, and a lot of people work, and so they couldn't get in, so.
How many years ago was that decision made?
Just with this newest yard waste rule, so probably a year ago.
Is that...
Outside people coming in?
Not letting them come in was about a year ago, if I think, I'm pretty sure it was.
I think it's been longer than that, hasn't it?
No, it was very recent.
Since Dave's been public works director.
Yeah, and I, I mean, it was a group decision, so I don't, we could go back and figure out when we changed the ordinance and maybe watch that part of the meeting, but...
Well, like I said, there's other issues that got to be, you know, worked out there before.
Yeah.
We dove into anything more.
And I, you know, we used to be able to burn out there, and then it wasn't as big of a deal. Now, we have to pay to get rid of everything, you know, pay to grind it up, everything that comes out there. So I think that was the thinking, if I remember right, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a lot more expensive than it looks.
Yeah, so.
Any...
Well, I appreciate you even thinking about it, so.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Warren.
You're welcome.
Okay, going to current business, number one, scene shop fundraising update.
Apparently, they are not here, so I guess I will do my best. In the packet, there was the, where we're currently sitting with pledges and donations. We're still short quite a bit. I know Wendy's been working on getting some grants and everything that she possibly can. Currently, we're still short about $455,000. That doesn't include any of the change orders. That's removed anything, and that's as of yesterday. In my budget amendment, if I don't transfer more cash, we're going to be short at the end of the project. So in my budget amendment, I am transferring about another $100,000. I'll only transfer as what's needed to close out the project, and then that will be part that they'll have to pay back as well.
So we, we've already put in $400,000?
We transferred in $400,000 from loss that they are supposed to pay us back.
Right.
Yeah.
But we're going to be low because we think we need $455,000.
Is that right? I think we're going to need $100,000 more.
Okay.
With the amount of cash that I, that still is outstanding and stuff, so I think I need to transfer it before we run out of cash at the end of the project.
Yeah.
So you're talking $500,000 now?
That they'll have to pay back, yeah. The catalyst and...
Might be a reason why I wouldn't have came today either.
The CUSB donation and the catalyst is almost $100,000, so if we get those, the catalyst won't come in until the end of the project and that's completed, and that other CUSB donation.
Goodness, since they got $559,496.50 from catalyst.
Correct. It's a $100,000 grant.
Okay.
And so we could collect up to 60% in the first draw that had to be drawn by June 30th, so I had to send that in, and then the rest we can get at the end. As far as their fundraising, I guess I don't know anything else on that. I thought somebody was going to be here.
Well, thank you for filling in for somebody.
Sorry.
Okay, possible motion to commit funds to the scene shop. I think this arose in the context of 1995 or something?
Correct, yeah. It was right around 2000 from last time's. If you guys wanted to commit that to it, if you wanted to commit more or less, where they didn't have to pay back the $500,000.
Any thoughts?
Well, you know, the, some of the people that are involved with that were kind of upset that they're all working real hard to raise money, and then we're, the whole idea of that event was to raise money for the scene shop, and then we're charging them to use the theater. I guess my thought is that anybody that wants to use the theater, strict, that's going to donate 100% of the money to the scene shop, we shouldn't probably charge them rent. I mean, I guess it's kind of a bookkeeping thing, but I don't know how much did they get charged?
Kind of took care of that at the last meeting.
Yeah, at the last meeting, we denied their request, so we're supposed to be getting a check for the $2,000 or whatnot, and then the rest for the scene shop. I haven't seen any of the checks yet.
So the question is, assuming we get the check that they owe us for the rent, do we want, do we want to pay them that amount back or some other amount?
Pay it into the city, yeah, into the scene shop fund.
Right. I guess I'm, being somebody who likes bookkeeping being correct, I really like to see them pay it, but I'm certainly not averse to saying, I'll give them back $2,000 for their project.
So you would pay the scene shop fund $2,000?
From the general fund.
Okay.
Or for whatever fund?
What they donate, what they give to us, we would turn around in kind, donate back. Right, I thought that's kind of what we're going to do, didn't we?
Well, we couldn't commit to it last time.
We couldn't?
No, you could only, we only voted on denying their request.
I think kind of a part of it was they were going to give us an update, kind of give us a better idea of where we stand with everything, and if, you know...
That was item one.
Have they reached out? I mean, have they sent out flyers and stuff to the residents of the community? I mean...
We sent them the water bills once. I know they talked about doing it a second time.
You've done that in the water bills?
Mm-hmm. What about all of us? Yes, I printed a list and gave her ones that were from front desk.
I've received that?
I don't know, I gave it to Wendy.
Oh.
I will follow up with her on that tomorrow, but I did give it to her. So yeah, I know she's talked about doing a second mailing on it, but I don't know when she's planning on doing it.
I know they have done it, but...
Will the theater commission be giving the city a check for the proceeds of the last event there?
CCT is supposed to be cutting us a check, yes, but I have not seen it.
For the 1995?
Yes. So I should be getting two checks, one for the 1995 and one for the 13,000 or whatever, the proceeds.
And then the 13,000 goes into the scene shop account, and the 1995 goes into operations, and then do we want to give them back 1995?
So I would make the motion that when they give us the check for the 1995, that we will donate that amount back to the scene shop.
Or do you want to do 2,000?
Okay, let's do that.
Do we give in 2,000?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yeah. The only thing to stand, I mean, we're done with that part, but I mean, when they're on the agenda, you know, for that to give us an update, they should be in here.
Yep, I'll agree with that.
I mean, you need to, you need to pass that on because, I mean, this could be turned the other way real quick by saying, you guys didn't show up, so we just said, heck with it.
Yep, I will definitely pass that on.
I mean, there's enough of them when they come here. There's 10 or 12 that show up when they want something, and then when we need an update, we've got nobody.
Yeah, I have no idea what happened. We'll give them the benefit of the doubt, but I'll agree with you 100%.
COVID is spreading, so maybe that's...
What?
Yeah, Iowa's one of the states that's rated as having substantially increasing COVID. Anyway, item three, Brenda Lentz to discuss changes to Canterbury Street speed zones and street parking. Brenda?
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm Brenda Lentz, I'm the elementary principal here in Cresco, and Dave and some others listed in my proposal met last week to discuss Canterbury Street, which is in front of the ECDC building. We have made some changes to some of our bus traffic there to increase safety with our students. And the two, the three pictures that I gave you, I realized, one is pretty small. We would like to have some no parking signs put closest to the, it's a gate that comes down where our buses drop off kids.
This is like at the far south end, right?
West.
No, west end.
The far west end. So the picture where the fire hydrant is, it would be where that gate is on the east side of the school property. From there to both drives that go, there'd be the boulevards that go east or west to the school property, to the driveway into the ECDC building, and then the driveway into that condo street there, putting no parking signs on both of those. And the reason behind that is our buses are going to stop at the crosswalk there before that arm and drop students off at the ECDC building versus driving in to the already congested parking lot area and driving back out onto the street.
Who's currently parking in there now? Do you have any idea? Is it employees or...
In, you can see in the bottom picture, we put some...
Barricades up there?
We put some barricades there because we had, there were staff parking on the boulevard there, and so we asked them not to park there. And you can see just behind that, you can see there, we installed a sidewalk there that goes from the road to our playground. And what kids used to do is when they came from the Crestwood Elementary, they cut in between cars across the parking lot. And so we want to clean up both of those areas so there's no vehicles there. The other day, we had, who was the day we met?
Thursday we met.
Thursday. The person whoever's responsible for mowing that area was parked along that road there, and so the road isn't very wide. So on the north side of the street there, if there was no parking on the north side, our buses wouldn't have to squeeze between vehicles. And then the south side is just the visibility when the kids come across the road and going to the playground. They could be kind of sneaky and get into those cars, and we want to make sure that that's as open. We also would like it to become a school zone if possible, slow down the traffic to 15 miles per hour. Our Head Start is located in that facility, our preschool is located in that facility, and then our daycare program, the Kessel program is there. So there's a lot of traffic in and out of there, especially early in the morning, and then at the very end of the day.
How many cars do you think parked there?
Well, the parking lot's too small, so that's part of the issue.
I counted 40 spots.
Yeah.
From the new photograph on the assessors' website, around 40.
And so I would say probably another, we start preschool tomorrow, so another six to eight staff members need parking, and they will park in that spot that I blocked off, had blocked off. Or if they park on the street in those two areas, it's going to create a funnel for our school buses, going to be pretty small. It's not a big section, but it, it's really big when it comes to traffic. Because nobody can enter that arm.
Where would they park then, if they couldn't park there?
Well, they could, they can park further down the street.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just those two sections that are, I don't know if you can see it on this smaller map here, it's just those two sections, smaller sections, they would only fit two cars anyway, if they parked parallel versus up onto the boulevard.
So basically, from your driveway on the west side down all the way to York, they could park on any of those sides?
Correct.
Okay. Just not in that little section?
Just not in those two little sections.
Okay.
Yeah, would be our desire.
So the kids are getting off the bus on the north side and crossing the street?
Yep.
Okay. And there's somebody out there to watch them?
Yeah.
Okay, that just didn't sound like...
And the students that ride the bus are four-year-olds, four- and five-year-olds. If they're the three-year-old, they have to have a sibling with them.
Here's where the cross...
So we have, we'll have a staff member...
Makes sense, kids cross that sidewalk, go into that playground.
The bus exit sign, and then across the road, and then at the playground, too.
Somebody get it.
So it's...
Not on my watch, at least.
And public traffic can't go past that point. So like where the bus stops, there'd be no reason for anybody to go around them. If they did, they're, they're accessing the school property without permission, basically.
So is that gate normally closed where you can go into the school property?
Yeah, but in the morning, it's open, I believe it opens at 7:20 in the morning, you know, when our buses start coming in, so the arm doesn't go up and down and up and down. And then it closes down about 8:10 a.m., and then it's closed all through the day.
Oh.
And then at the end of the day, when the buses come from the bus garage, it's open for another 15-minute window or so, I believe.
So is there any issue with cars driving through that when the gate is open?
Sometimes. And sometimes people drive around it, because it doesn't go all the way across the road.
I think you have to get up on the sidewalk almost to go around it. And I forget, so that, you go through that gate, you go west and then south, is there another gate?
Yep, there's another gate.
By the softball, baseball diamonds there?
Yep. Before you get onto Schroeder. Yeah, there's one just off of the softball, baseball diamond area.
And that's open and closed same hours, probably?
Same time.
And there's no dragon rail in that gate?
No.
No, not that one.
You need to do the same thing up on that Canterbury, because that, that won't stop, nothing up there? Realistically, nobody's got any business up there. I mean, it's school business only. I mean, it don't affect the people that live in the condos off to the side, because they turn off way before that. You know, and if you have kids crossing that street, they're going to the north and then west down to that playground. Did I catch that in your statement, where that sidewalk comes?
It goes, the sidewalk goes south to the playground.
Okay.
So from the road, it goes south.
And you can see that on the new aerial from the county, and goes right here. And I believe you said Thursday that, so the bus stops there, the kids get out, and they're directed or helped to the playground. That's their first stop.
Yep, correct. And that's only for, for our preschoolers and Head Start students.
Just not on this map.
So no daycare students are dropped off by the buses. That was just the traffic, parents dropping off their kids for daycare.
Thing comes across here.
Would you be open to have it no parking Monday through Friday, 8 to 6, or 7 to...
Oh, yeah.
So that way, it's only during school hours, so like if the condo people were having a party or something, that they could actually park in those buses?
Yeah, I would say during school hours would be most appropriate.
Because I know when I took one up there for like the preschool little ones for the orientation, there's no parking.
There's no parking.
But it's at night, so there's no buses.
Yeah, so...
So if we define the hours versus instead of during school hours, so if there's a program at night, is that school hours?
No, typically we would define school hours as bell-to-bell.
So...
So it'd be an extracurricular.
So like nine, 8 to 4?
Well, if she's having with the buses, I would probably say from 7 to 5.
For the no parking, alright.
How many, if we did that on both sides roughly, what have we given up? Just four parking spots realistically?
It's probably more than that. So again, you're talking from the gate?
Just to the driveways.
The two driveways, the, on both sides. Let's see how many feet, if this will work on here.
Just Monday through Friday, right?
Do buses come back there after they drop off the kids after school?
No, the, all bus traffic comes in, that comes from the east and then goes around and goes out the south. So that moves around. So then it's only, the buses only travel that one way.
Okay, so like 7 even to 4 because then you're still on that time for the busiest?
7 to 4 would be...
Pickup, pickup's probably 4 o'clock and after is when it's probably the busiest.
3:30 to 4, yeah.
About approximately 300 feet from the gate to pass their second driveway on both sides.
You mean this driveway?
From here to this driveway.
Oh, I thought we were only going to this driveway.
If you want to go past both driveways?
The first driveway.
You said both?
No, it's one here. So there's a driveway here to the condos, correct? And then the driveway that turns in to Kessel.
So both sides of the street.
Yeah, so one driveway, two driveway.
So not, not your second driveway?
Not the furthest east driveway.
Not the second Kessel driveway?
No.
Okay, so that's probably 150 feet?
Yeah, the first, it would be the first one.
The furthest west.
Right, correct.
Kind of carrying it, just for, pretty sure we're on the same path. But here's that condo driveway, you're talking this area right here on both sides.
Yep, where those three cars are and where that car is, that's it.
Right where the cars are.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, on this picture, there's cars parked in the boulevard.
Is there?
Yeah.
What'd you say, Dave, 150?
150-ish, yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And what it does is it opens, it opens that area where the buses then...
Do you want to see a picture of it, Amy?
No, I've...
Okay.
The buses don't, if somebody were to park there, they don't have to come around and be further from the curb and that type of stuff, so.
How many buses go through there a day, do you know? Like in the morning?
We run 14 buses, 14 routes, I believe.
And they all go through there?
Yep.
Wasn't one of the transits picking up kids, moving them during the day two through there?
We eliminated the route that went there and then turned around and then went back. And so we're walking more students. So that's one of the reasons that we were asking for this, because we've eliminated that. We used to have a bus that would pick up the kids, drive into the middle of that, that turnaround, and then go to the end, turn around and drive them back.
Okay.
And so we've eliminated that and want them walking.
And then there was also discussion of like 15 mile an hour speed limit on that road?
Yeah.
I have that anyway with Kessel kids right there.
I've, I've, I've got no problem with that. But when you look at the proposed ordinance, it references streets that don't even exist.
So that's my fault because I looked at four or five different maps. And four or five different maps have it all labeled differently. So I talked to the police chief and this is what we came up with. Like I couldn't find anything that specifically said north Schroder Drive, south Schroder Drive. The school is listed as Fourth Avenue East, but then it also says Norman Borlaug Drive. This little street here says it's 10th Street East.
Yeah, that's...
Because once you hit the, once you hit the school, you go into the school area, it's, it's not a public street anymore.
Yeah, right, so, yeah, so it's, it's actually referring to things that don't exist.
Schroder Drive is a public street. The loop around the parking lot.
Correct. But the streets that we're referring, that what you're, we're talking about with you are Canterbury Street.
No, because Canterbury Street ends at the school property and does not access 10th Street East slash Schroder Drive because that's not a street, that's not a public street.
So I can take the Schroder Drive off of here. Just with reading the maps, it was confusing.
I know, it's very confusing.
I didn't know where to stop it because I mean...
I don't know what you have in front of you. I only have my proposal, so I don't know what...
Well, I was looking at the Assessor's website and it's, it's hard because I figured they're the people who know what a drive is and what the streets are named.
Yeah, because yeah, down here is...
Yeah.
On the far east side of the parking lot, south of the high school where all the kids park, that spot between Schroder Drives that goes north and south is listed as 10th Street East. And then the part of what I call Schroder Drive that goes directly south of the high school is Third Avenue East. And what's the high school's address, 1,000 Schroder Drive?
Yeah.
So I mean, that's, what's right, I don't know.
I was grasping. I figured that if I went up to Schroder Drive, it kind of encompassed it all.
Because this only pertains to Canterbury from when you turn off of, what is the street that runs through Webster's?
York.
And when you turn off of York, the only street that would be concerned with is Canterbury up to school property.
Okay, so we're not, because the way it's listed now, it goes to Schroder.
No, it, we, we're not going to Schroder, we're stopping at that gate.
The school, okay.
So that's all we'd have to put under is Canterbury.
From Canterbury from York to school property.
Mm-hmm.
To school.
It's what, roughly a block and a half?
I suppose, yeah.
It's a school gate. And it makes a lot of sense. I, I assumed it was 50 miles anyway.
And then we're talking with Jeff Friedhoff too, if it's considered a school zone or, or, yeah, considered a school zone, there's different rules with the parking of the buses and, or not parking, but the stopping and...
The stopping of the arms and things.
Right.
When you're in a school zone, the bus does not have to put out the stop sign. And I don't know if they have to do the yellow flashers, I can't, don't quote me. But when they're in a school zone, their bus arm doesn't have to come out like it does if they're on a normal street.
Hmm, that's interesting.
So right now, like tomorrow, we start preschool tomorrow. So when the bus stops there, they'll have their arm out, their flashers and their stop sign. If it's a school zone, they don't have to do that same type of stop process. I think they only have to put their yellow flashers on.
The other thing is currently we have a bunch of ones that are related to schools. And let's see, we currently have A through G. And only G, which is Second Street East from North Park Place to First Avenue East, which is basically right over here, only that one says when children are present.
For the speed limit.
Yeah, for the speed limit. And I'm wondering, do you know why the others don't have that?
I do not.
So I asked that once.
Oh, oh.
Because my kids have gone up there since they were little. And during the summer, like you said, I mean, there's not that many people out. But I was told because of the amount of activities, it's just better to have it lower between all the sports and summer programs and everything, just the amount of kids that are up there all the time.
Which would separate it from here, this school zone to that school zone, would be the difference in activity when children are present?
Correct, yeah.
That makes sense?
Because up there you've got the after-school activities, you've got the summer programs, and you have all of that up there, so.
And Second Avenue East would not be like that?
Second Avenue East, that's going to be right in front of Notre Dame School.
Right. So that wouldn't be...
No, because it only goes up to, I think, fifth grade over at Notre Dame. So they don't have any of the junior high sports or any of the high school sports.
Right, but so what I'm saying is why wouldn't this one also say when children are present?
That was all before my time. That I do not know, I did not know that it was not...
I wish they all said it.
What's the, what's the chief's opinion? You dealt with him, worked with him?
You know, I don't know on that. I guess, I mean, he was with us when we talked the other day. And as far as when children are present or not, I'm not 100% sure.
Would the speed limit sign be past the dental place, before the dental place or right after its driveway?
I would assume if we're doing the whole street, it would be right when you turn onto it then.
When you turn onto it.
It's 15 all the way down.
Yeah.
And another reason that that would be good is that neighborhood down there has a lot of children in it. And they walk after school, they walk down that direction, there is not a sidewalk. The Notre Dame students, when they're pick, if they live on that side, they're able to ride the bus over because it's a natural drop-off. And there's a group of probably 10 students that walk from there down into that area to...
Where do they get dropped off there?
With the bus.
Okay.
When we pick up students at Notre Dame, if they're bus riders and they live on that side of town, they can, they ride the bus over to the high school.
Okay.
And then the students get off that bus onto their particular bus that takes them home. And the students that live in that area then just walk home from there. It's, it's enough students that it takes a regular-sized bus to do that.
So are we thinking just west on Canterbury Street from York to the school gate?
To the school gate, that's the only area he's concerned with.
Yeah.
So...
Because we can't, we can't legislate the rest of it.
No. Put the 15 mile an hour speed limit sign in, put the no parking on each side. You know, we come up with, with wording, you know, no parking during school hours or whatever. That's exactly what you're after, correct? And I mean, and if you've got kids crossing there and buses, I mean, it's just a safety issue all the way around, so.
Should be done anyway.
So the speed limit could be for all of Canterbury Street?
Well, we don't know. It would be for all of Canterbury Street, other than the part that goes east.
That's Canterbury Court.
Yes.
Well, it's a different street. Canterbury Street could all have the 15 mile an hour speed limit.
Yeah.
Because it ends at the gate and starts at the corner.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that'd be easy. What do we need then for that today?
So Canterbury Street only?
Canterbury Street only.
From York to the school gate?
Well, that's Canterbury Street.
Yeah, that's the only place it is.
All of Canterbury Street would have a 15 mile an hour...
Because the rest is Cambridge Street and Cambridge Court, I think, over here, so it'll fill in, but...
Yeah, that's Canterbury Court.
Yeah.
But I mean, it doesn't hurt to, to say from, but yeah. I guess I'd kind of like to, what somebody said, ask the chief why we're, why, why, especially this, this Second Avenue East doesn't have when children are present? Because that's running right in front of the school. When the one that's 90 degrees to it does. I mean, if we're going to rewrite the ordinance, let's rewrite it.
Do you want to add that to it?
After we talk to the chief, okay. Yeah, if I were making a motion, it would include adding that to the current F.
Okay.
And I think you should take your time to do that and make sure that it's consistent. So if you need more time to make those decisions and make a proposal and do that.
Ask the chief, that's all.
Yeah.
Because they have to enforce it.
And, and, but for yours, we're saying no parking during school hours, 7 to 4. Are we saying the speed limit's 15 only during 7 to 4?
I would say all the time. Because daycare is open from 5:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Okay.
And all year, all year.
Okay, yeah.
It's busy, it's busy over there.
And there's really nobody on that street other than the, the school people or the Kessel kids or the people that drive up to the condos.
And there's going to be another condo built there. So that's yet more traffic that would come on a regular basis.
It'd be just easier leaving at 15 all the way. Makes it easier for us.
Yeah.
I'd be in favor of doing that. We just got to get, get the, the chief, you know, I mean, make sure he's in agreement with everything and gets to get it done.
I mean, he, he was with us and I know on the speed limit, he didn't have any questions about it. What Amy's asking, I don't know the answer there from him, so.
So we can probably just say no parking on the west, 150 feet on either side.
And just put the sign?
On Canterbury Street.
Yeah, just, just post it.
No, we can't, it's part of an ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So I just didn't know how far or what you guys would want to say, so I didn't write anything for that one.
Probably what we would do is go out and measure it exactly versus off of this. And I'd probably bring Jeff or somebody in and say, no parking to here. We'll measure it and then that's what we'd call it.
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with you, I mean, getting it together and then making a decision as a council. Any change that slows people down and keeps it the visibility better, that's, that's what we're asking.
I don't think everybody's for it, it's just getting the wording right.
Yep, yep, thank you.
I'd go back there and looked at that and agree with everything you're doing other than I would put a little stiffer gate in that backside because that sure is nothing.
No, it doesn't.
And there was a lot of kids there.
I'll take that back.
Thanks, Fernando.
Yeah, any other questions? And if you do have some, please feel free to call me, it's not a problem.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So wait on 4, 5, 6?
Just for the chief.
You mean 5, 2, 6?
4, 5, 6.
Oh, oh, yes, okay. Yes. Have a good night. Thank you.
Night.
Is that the kind of thing we want to wait till we talk to him? Or do we make a motion and pass it pending his approval or?
I guess I would probably wait.
We may get it in 10 days.
Do the whole thing. Do the whole thing at once. So we're tableing 4, 5, and 6?
So I guess that would be my question, if we talk to the chief, are you guys interested in possibly waiving the second and third reading on something like this?
Something like, it, it affects so many little kids in the school. But the public outside of that, you know? You really have no business being back there on that street unless you're going to Kessel Kids or going to those two condos.
Yeah, we're looking at public safety, I, I'm definitely...
I'm actually fine with it too.
Fine with waiving it.
Okay, I will put that on next time.
Okay. Item 7, set public hearing for budget amendment number one for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026.
So that will be on the 15th at 5:30. And then I did have some questions before we go on with that too. I guess my questions are, with all the rain, we've had a lot of storm sewer repairs. The capital improvement fund just kind of keeps building until we go do a project and then we kind of transfer it over to start the project. So it currently has 304,000 sitting there. Are you guys okay if I use some of those funds to pay for the storm sewer? Some of the storm sewer repairs?
Any idea what kind of monies we're looking at? You want to move?
Um, currently I'm at about 100,000 of storm sewer repairs.
That's all since this last rain, huh?
Not since the last rain per se, but they're, they're popping up, you know?
That's only, I've got 60,000 just with the Second Street East, so up there. And 29, that was 40,000. So those two alone are 60,000. So I don't know how much the one on Third Avenue East is, the one on Fourth Avenue East. I think there's one down on Fifth Avenue Southwest.
I think it's something we're going to have to talk about pretty deep, deeply at budget time with the storm sewer and how much we may need there, so.
Well, I mean, we're, we're dancing around a stormwater utility.
Yeah. So the road, the road use fund is where we do pay some of it out for fiscal '26. We're already budgeting a $98,000 loss. So that's why I was kind of thinking maybe kick some of that over to the capital improvement because it's showing an $80,000 profit, so.
How much, how much you want?
I was thinking maybe 100,000 start out with and if, hopefully you don't go over that. And if not, we'll be budgeting them again. So do 100,000, yeah.
You need a motion on that or?
Nope, so that's going to be on the public hearing next time. I do need a motion to set the public hearing though.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I'll second it.
Buska?
Oh, yes.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Bassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
And I will send out the more detail from what I sent you guys earlier, hopefully by Friday, so you can see the final numbers.
Okay. Item 8, resolution establishing subject calling terms and conditions and setting fees.
So this is for receiving from subject tanks in the porta-potties. So it's the $60.25 base charge and then it would be based on the amount of gallons and it would be the same as the rural customers. And then it gives the sewer department the right to review and reject any loaves that they feel will be detrimental to the plant.
Mike's been all over that, sounds like a pretty good project, so.
It's pretty comparable to what like other towns charge or?
Um, I haven't been able to find a whole lot of rates on it, but it's, ours is based on Lansing's. That's where the base rate came from.
And, and last time you were going to check and see about ones that had decided not to accept septic and you found out that was mostly staffing or?
So Mike and I talked about that and, and there might not be a need. You know, nobody's asked them and then, you know, that's, that's one thing. He said it could be a capacity issue with their plant itself. They don't want to over, go over capacity or have a reason to go over. He said it could be staffing too. over, go over capacity or have a reason to go over, he said it could be staffing too. And I think right now he's got one hauler in mind and that's probably what it'll be for the most part.
Till the word gets out that we're doing it, I mean, it could drive, you know, revenue for that department out there.
It, it could, I don't know, I'm sorry. I mean, I don't think it's gonna bring in thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. If it does, I guess so be it, but.
But you provide a service for your local septics and.
Right.
And plumbers and stuff too, so.
Yeah.
And Mike has put in a fair amount of time into this, you know, thought this process out, so.
Yeah.
Well, I assume certainly if we decide that was too cheap, we can up the rate at any time.
Yeah.
And he determines, he makes the final decision on whether it gets unloaded or not, so.
Yeah.
And I was looking at the, getting started on the CIP today and I saw that was actually on the CIP for last year and to install the fancy equipment that the engineers thought, it was like eighty-five thousand. But the way he's doing it, we don't need any fancy equipment.
Yeah, you can take care of it right there, so.
Do we need a motion to this effect too?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll move it, we adopt this resolution.
Second. Oh, you second, okay.
Roll call?
Bassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Okay, item nine, resolution accepting the annual urban renewal report of the city of Cresco, Iowa for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and directing the city clerk to file the report with the state of Iowa Department of Management.
And this is one of the annual reports that we file with them. We don't utilize tip or anything, so it's always zeros. So there's nothing wild and crazy on it?
So moved.
Second it.
Roll call?
McConnell?
Yes.
Bassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Item ten, discuss the Cresco urban revitalization plan.
Um, so our current plan expires in twenty twenty-six, so I did reach out to Allers and he sent out a draft plan. He had a couple of questions, just know how, wanted to know how we wanted to proceed. We didn't change any of the limits, so I didn't know if anybody wanted to change the limits. I did talk to Lori and she recommended leaving them the way they are. So then really the only change would be if you guys want to just extend it out a couple of years or if you guys want to make it evergreen where it automatically renews until you guys decide you want to cancel it.
He said in the email that the city is not currently offering the maximum exemption schedule permitted by state law for properties assessed as residential property, blah, blah, blah. And the city offers only one of the two maximum exemption schedules for commercial property. So what could we be offering?
That I do not know, he did not give me that information.
Because I thought we were at the max.
I did too.
So that really surprised me.
I can get that information and come back to you?
Great. The other thing that struck me is this calls, it specifically lists the, unless I'm confusing these things, lists the zoning codes that we have and not where they are, but you only list the codes like R one and R two. Do we want to wait on this until after we finish the comprehensive plan? Do we think that there might be any changes to those? I mean, because kind of it should be comprehensive plan and then this.
Okay.
But.
What kind of changes would you?
I don't know.
I thought there was one we were talking about, was it zone two and three or something like that?
Well, we were talking about moving some of the R one to R two. I mean, it just seems like we haven't finalized that thought process.
Yeah.
Because we've got the twenty twenty-six, right?
Correct, yep. So part of the seven eighteen was the minimum assessment agreement that we had to do for the two properties on Seventh. So we've already got that one started, so yeah, it would just, it was just a matter of renewing it a little bit earlier. But we can wait until maybe in the spring.
Doesn't that, the R two, I mean, when you talk about those zoning things, isn't that the one where they, you could build houses on smaller lots or something? Is that the way?
You could build, for instance, okay, up where, I can't remember where, I, I think at least on Eighth Street East, that's R one. So you couldn't build a two-unit condo like the ones across from?
My place.
No, across from Emmanuel Lutheran.
Oh, okay.
Um, whereas, well, and I, I mean, some of the lots might not take it, but if the lot would take it, would, would we be opposed to having two units?
Well, there was something in the legislature, I sent it to you, I guess I didn't look into it very much today, about the accessory dwelling units. I don't think you can ban them now, so I don't know if that changes anything.
Yeah, it seems like we haven't, and, but then it's weird because Eighth Street is R one, Ninth Street I think is R two, Yankee is R two.
I'd have to get the map and I don't have one here, but.
Yeah, so it just seems like we haven't kind of finished that thought process.
Think it through before we start.
I will get answers to how much the maximums are and then go with that.
Thank you.
I know, I don't think I've ever remember anybody coming and asking for higher limits than we already offer.
I don't give them much chance either.
It's true.
Okay, we're done in ten. Number eleven is discuss handicap parking spaces in the downtown district. Dave?
I went to the chamber meeting, the retail business meeting, and discussed it with them about Brady's request from removing the one in front, or on south side of the old Baptist Church and they, they, they recommended that we do that. There's, as you can see in the drawing, there's four other spots right there. There was talk of maybe moving the one from Bill Myers down south a little ways. We might have to work through that one a little bit because Bill Myers kind of like it there too. We have plenty of handicap spots around town in the, in the main area there, so we're not shorting ourselves of any.
When, when we did that Main Street revitalization, that handicap parking spot in front of that apartment building wasn't part of that equation at that time, was it? That wasn't one of the mandatory ones that needed to be?
I don't know.
No, we stopped at North Elm.
Okay.
And the south side of Third, if you believe, yeah.
Most space probably never gets used.
It got used, it got used when the county store was opened by one of their employees, I know. And then as far as the church, there's, there's four other ones near the church, you know, and, yeah, so.
Was it there when the Baptist Church was still?
I have no idea.
I can see it a lot.
I'm guessing it probably was.
So the chamber had no issues with it?
No, no, that group, that group didn't, no.
What, do we need a motion to change it?
I haven't found if it's in the code book anywhere, but I would start with motion and if it's an ordinance or something, I'll write it up and bring it back.
Make that motion to change it.
Second it. Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Bassan?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
That's just the one spot, all right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Number twelve, third reading of proposed ordinance five eighteen to amend chapter sixty-nine oh nine, sections oh one, oh two, oh three, and adding sections oh five, oh six, oh seven, in the city of Cresco code of ordinances pertaining to parking regulations. I think we should leave this till, till Alex comes back.
I'm fine with that.
Probably was on the key.
You don't want to read that thing, yeah?
You don't have to, remember, you don't have to.
Oh, I don't have to?
It's all, yeah, this, John Anderson told me once, he thought we were the, one of the only cities that actually reads them, so.
Really?
Really?
Yeah.
So you're saying we don't have to read them things? We're supposed to?
Yeah.
Look at them.
I guess I would continue reading it because I think most people watch it on TV and they don't read the packet.
Well, and honestly, we started, so, okay, we're gonna read ordinance five eighteen, July eighth, twenty twenty-five, version final B four, parking regulations. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Cresco, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to parking regulations, be it enacted by the city council of the city of Cresco, Iowa as follows. Sections one, sections modified, chapter sixty-nine oh nine, sections one, two, three, and adding sections five, six, and seven, in the code of ordinances of the city of Cresco, Iowa, are repealed and the following adopted in lieu thereof. Sixty-nine oh nine, truck, trailer, RV, boat, and equipment parking limited. No person shall park a vehicle having a freight capacity greater than one ton or any trailer, farm equipment, boat, recreational vehicle, or equipment of any type at any time upon any portion of any street except for such reasonable time as may be necessary to load or unload passengers, freight, or other merchandise. The provisions of this section shall not apply to one-ton or smaller trucks or vehicles. Code of Iowa, section three twenty-one, point two-three-six, paragraph one. Business district, except only when such vehicles are actually engaged in delivery or receiving of merchandise or cargo, no person shall park or leave such vehicles unattended on any streets within the business district. When actually receiving or delivering merchandise or cargo, such vehicles shall be stopped or parked in a manner which will not interfere with other traffic. Two, residential district, no person shall stand or park a vehicle having a capacity greater than one ton, except that the driver may temporarily stand or park in a residential area for the purpose of and while actually engaged in loading or unloading such vehicle. This provision also applies to any trailer when disconnected from the tractor or from the vehicle meant to tow or pull the trailer. Paragraph three, noise, this section includes any street, boulevard, right-of-way, alley, driveway, private parking lots, and public parking lots. No such vehicle or trailer shall be left standing or parked with the engine, auxiliary engine, generator, air compressor, refrigerating equipment, or other device in operation giving off audible sounds and noises, except only four, between the hours of six a.m. and nine p.m. One, while actively loading and unloading a truck or trailer. Two, while being used for construction or demolition. Three, when within the driveway of a service station, when actually being serviced, and then in no event for more than thirty minutes. Paragraph four, livestock, no change. Paragraph five, commercial service trailers. Licensed contractors with service trailers actively working on residences or businesses and projected parking for more than twenty-four hours need to give notice to the city of Cresco for exemption. A dated permit will be available to be placed on the trailer during the time of construction or service. Six, designated public parking, there is a public parking lot located at the airport for trucks and trailers where they may be parked with their engine, auxiliary engine, generator, air compressor, and/or refrigeration equipment running. Seven, government and emergency response vehicles are exempt from this ordinance. Section two, severability clause, if any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law, passed and approved this day of twenty twenty-five.
Do you need a motion? All right, I'll, I'll second it.
Roll call?
Buska?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Bassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
It's item thirteen, approval of ordinance five eighteen pertaining to parking regulations.
So.
Second it.
Roll call?
Bassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Just now that we've passed this ordinance, I did have an interesting meeting with one of our constituents, but we're gonna have to take a serious look when we get into this dumpster thing, parking on the streets, that there's gonna have to be some, some teeth put into that ordinance. And we can't sit there for, for months at a time.
Right, and that's the next thing I will be working on now is, is the dumpster one. And I mean, we've got, I mean, we've got most of, most of what we've talked about written into it after our discussion with, with Lucas and, and at Hawkeye Sanitation, Lucas and Julian and stuff, so probably the, the one thing that we haven't, as a group, discussed is what that timeframe is.
Well, it, it just, it can't be like it has been.
Right, and I think what Lucas, from what I remember, Lucas mentioned two weeks is typically enough. And if we want to extend it another week or another two weeks, that's, that's up to us, but.
The conversation specifically brought up two places where there's, they've sat and are currently sitting and, yeah, can't happen.
Yeah, okay.
So this one will move quicker now since we got this one passed.
Right, yeah.
And they're, they're more reserved to help us.
Yeah, and this parking ordinance doesn't come into effect until it's published in the paper, I believe, correct?
Yeah.
And this does have the backing of the city, police, the chief, everybody involved with it.
With the dumpster.
For the, I'm talking about the parking ordinance.
Yeah.
It will be enforced when people complain, is what I was told, so.
Okay, item fourteen, discuss ordinance changes to weeds.
Weeds, okay, and.
Weed.
Yep. Something Alex and I had talked about and, and right now, our code says that if grass is over six inches tall, we send them a letter and they mow it.
Or don't mow it.
Or don't mow it, right. And I think I've sent out around thirty of them since the middle of May. Some of them are multiple, probably four, five, three to five landlords and/or residents have been multiple. I've found many cities where they put a notice in the paper once a year and that constitutes their notice and then if they don't mow it, then the city mows it.
And charges a bunch of money, right?
Which, which we do too, yeah.
But these, the majority of these are, these habitual violators that you're going back after all the time?
Um, probably not all of them, I mean, if I sent out thirty of them, I think about this.
Four are duplicate.
What's that?
Four of them are duplicate this year.
Just four?
Yes.
Yeah, something like that, so.
So it's just, what do they, the other ones say? Or do they go ahead and do it or?
Some have, some haven't. There's one up north of the, the fitness center that I sent the third notice to, I think, today and, I don't know, they mow their lawn in sections, I don't get it, but Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, everybody knows you have to mow your lawn. At the nuisance conference, I know there was, where it's six inches or higher where they have to mow it, I know some cities are, were eight, ten, and twelve inches, which is a lot too, but I don't know why we, like I said, everybody knows you got to mow your lawn, right?
Apparently not.
Well, I know, I know. So, so like I said, I've found several cities where they, they put an ordinance or a notice in the paper and that's in their ordinance that they have to do that once a year and then that constitutes a notice to everybody, you got to mow your lawn.
I guess I don't agree with it because to me, if you're gonna charge somebody a hundred dollars to mow their lawn, you need to send them a letter. I mean, to me, it's the same as the water bills, I mean, everybody knows they have a water bill and we still send the notices for the ones that are auto pay, you know, the ones that don't pay it and the ones that we post, we still post thirty of them every other month.
I'm kind of in between. I, I don't think the paper is sufficient, but if I send the person the letter once, it seems to me that should be for the rest of the summer.
Be your first and only.
Yeah.
Right. Do the paper, but, and the paper's just kind of a, because some people may not get the paper, but most do get the shabbard, don't they?
Well, I mean, the, the Cresco paper is our official paper for notices, that's the only one, right? So that's why we put our meeting notices in there and hearing, public hearings and all that stuff, so.
But if we sent it in the water bill, that would be?
I'm not stopping eighteen hundred of them. Sorry.
Yeah.
That takes a long time.
Well, then the thing of it is too, not everybody gets a water bill if you have automatic deposit.
Or they don't open it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I guess I just want to see where everybody sits on that, if it's something that.
Well, it needs to be done, but how do you put teeth in it so that we're not?
I mean, I, I've got a handful of the cities here and I mean, it's pretty much what they
But is it that hard to send a letter and take a picture? I mean, it doesn't take long to do it.
When Alex and I talked about it, he agreed that, that we all have better things to do than tell people to mow their lawn. And so this one, I don't know what city this is from, it probably says on here somewhere, but, and like I said, I've got several of these, but the, the city mayor, city administrator shall destroy or remove such weeds, they, they have somebody do it. I don't know, they pretty much all say the same things, like I said, they have a dozen ones they have here and.
Well, how do you make it that if you're mowing it, there's a fine?
So like ours is a minimum of a hundred bucks and.
Last time we did it, we were billed fifty, so we're getting fifty dollars if we go mow it, if it's consistent.
So like ours is a minimum of 100 bucks, and.
Last time we did it, we were billed 50, so we're getting $50 if we go mow it, if it's consistent.
So we only billed them 50, you mean?
No, we should be billing the 100, but we were billed by the person $50.
Yeah.
So we, there's a city official that goes and mows it?
We, I have, I have.
Dave's been contracting it out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So like right now, if I sent one out today, I gave them seven days, it takes two days to get there. And, you know, so today is the third, I think I gave them till noon on the ninth, and I'll go look at it on the eighth, and if it's not mowed, I'll probably get ahold of one of the people we've had to get an estimate to say, say, what would you charge to mow this? And, and I said, well, if they don't mow it by noon tomorrow, then have at it, you know, so.
Will you always contract it then, Alex?
No. Water used to do it, sometimes Nick would do it in the past.
Oh, yeah?
I think Parks have done it a couple times.
Parks have?
It seemed to make more sense to contract it out, just hire somebody to do it, then we're out of the liability thing. We're, our guys are out there mowing and they cut something in the lawn, or.
Well, I would, I mean, we'd still be named, but.
If it's a contracted guy, he's got to have his own liability insurance.
But we send him there, so.
I think there's too many circumstances that people's circumstances can change, and need to, need to just go and start mowing somebody's lawn without giving him, at least trying to give them notice. I mean, if somebody's in the hospital, I mean.
Vacation?
Vacation, I mean, it's a letter.
But most generally, I mean, not, growing grass is, six inches is one thing, but it's the weeds and the trees and the branches and the stuff that comes with it, so.
But it, I mean, it is a huge problem.
Yeah.
You drive around town, you, you think.
You got to start someplace.
Yeah.
But we've only done 25, I mean, 25 out of 1,800 house, 1,800 houses.
Thirty.
It's still 30 houses, I mean, we mail out 1,800 water bills every month, I mean, I mow my lawn every week, I mean, 18, and you're looking at 2,000 times a month that somebody could, and you're only sending 30.
We'd like to have a place for spring of 26.
So that's, that's what it would be, I mean, if we're going to do an annual notice, for instance, in the paper, we do in the spring, I think that's what most towns do by April 1st.
Well, don't we publish a notice at the beginning of the winter season? We publish a notice saying you have to shovel your sidewalks and.
I don't know if we did last year, I guess.
I know we have in the past.
We have.
I've seen it in there, yeah.
So what do we do if somebody doesn't shovel their sidewalk?
Send them a letter, and.
Send them a letter.
That, that's, I mean, there's, yeah, send them a letter, and I don't think I had anybody where we went and cleaned their sidewalk last year.
Well, there are a whole bunch of them who didn't get cleaned off.
Oh, I know.
I can tell you that.
I know.
So you want this for the spring of 21?
That's, I mean, that's probably what it would be, yeah.
So we need to wash it out?
I just, no, I, I just want to know what the thought is, if, if you want me to move forward, creating something.
I think we do.
So you're really okay with mowing somebody's lawn if they've been in the hospital? I mean, you're not doing people.
If they come with the circumstance, no, I mean.
But by then, it'll be too late.
Well, I think that.
I think we should just continue with the letter.
What's that, Jen?
I think we should just continue with the letter, as he has been doing.
Every time for the same people that know they have to mow their lawn too?
Well, there's only been two.
No, there's been more than that.
There's been four duplicates.
Four duplicates.
That we've mowed?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but there's been more that I probably sent out.
That was from your spreadsheet earlier today.
Okay, so I'd have to think about that then.
But you know, there's a way, there's a way to address that, you know, you put the thing in the paper beginning of the year, you run it in multiple papers, and they get one letter, one final notice after that type of thing, you know? Do, do your thing in the spring when it comes out the paper, put it in the paper, say, this is your notice, you get one letter, not four or five letters or three letters, one letter.
That's kind of, that's where I.
Where, and if action's not taken by this date, then the city will.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's more time for me than just sending out the letter too, obviously, but.
Well, and I, I would say to, to Nikki's point, if we went and mowed somebody's lawn and sent them 100, a bill for $100 or whatever it turns out to be, and they came and said to us, I was in the hospital, I was having heart surgery, I would be really inclined to, you know, pull that bill back.
Yeah, but then, of course, too, I mean, this would be me, if my neighbor was in the hospital and I knew it, I would just go and mow his lawn.
Yeah.
So I mean, I would think we have people like that. I've got a neighbor that was injured, been in the hospital, I've mowed their lawn twice, but the lawn right next to there is the one that we mowed once.
It's not that we got to settle tonight, but I, I think there's ways around it, without you spending your time chasing multiple letters, and, you know, we might have to look at raising the fees and stuff on it, and, you know, if you got progressives that continue to do it, the rate continues to go up type thing.
Yeah, if you go and mow it three or four times a year, I would have to say that that second, third, fourth time would be.
They're probably getting it done cheaper than if they had to go out and hire a service to do it for them, so.
Right.
Right, so.
Well, we have to be careful. And at, at some point, if you keep increasing it very much beyond your, your cost, it's all of a sudden looking like a fine, and that, I'm not sure if that's.
I think our current.
Something different from charging somebody to mow their lawn.
And I think our current code says, and it's probably here, that $100 initially and then $100 per hour after that, first hour.
Okay.
So if it took an hour and 10 minutes, then that's a $200 bill.
And then that's assessed on the tax rolls, or how's that?
Yes. If they don't pay them, right, it can be a.
I think this is something we look at and.
If we're, worthy of discussion going forward.
Yeah, there's a house down by me, and, I mean, we mowed it when it got about that high, and the people know it's a problem, they've been there.
I sent them a letter today again.
You sent them a letter. It's that house with that siding. Well, it's right next to it. I don't know what we can do about them, not with the siding, but the other one, stick to the grass for right now.
Okay, so you have kind of a thought process.
Yep.
Item 15, Discuss Ordinance Changes to Tree Trimming in Boulevards and Alley's.
Right now, our, our tree trimming ordinance does not mention alleys at all, and I found one here, and it's from Decorah, and they put the responsibility on the homeowner, because it's, I mean, if the trees that are in, aren't necessarily in the alley, they're beside it, and the City of Decorah makes the homeowner trim those trees 16 feet above the surface of the street or alley. And right now, our, our code does not address that at all, and so in the past, the street department has taken it upon themselves to do it, and I'm just curious if there's an interest in changing that. I mean, it's, it's the homeowner's responsibility to trim those trees, we just don't have that in our code that says that, and I think this, this is in your packet, I believe, right? Yeah.
How much time do we dedicate to that a year roughly, if you had to grab a figure?
Oh, days, hours, I don't know. I don't think it's, it just goes under trees in the budget, I think, right?
Before we go start changing anything in ordinance, I'd like to know what it's, what do we actually spend, and what's it costing the city?
And I can, I can look into that, um, yeah.
The, the concern I have is already we don't enforce the ordinance that says above a sidewalk, you're supposed to trim it to eight, six, eight feet, because many is the time that I've been poked in the face.
I have sent letters out for that.
Oh, okay, I'm.
From 16 feet, you're starting to hit, I'd assume, power lines, I mean, 16 feet, that's high up, I mean, that to me is dangerous.
Maybe we'd want to keep it above the, the equipment is the goal.
But why wouldn't they be responsible just for the first eight feet above that?
Some trucks might be taller than that with the wing.
But I don't, I don't have a way to, if you, if I had an alley, what you're saying is, if I had an alley, I have no way to trim it other than hiring a tree service.
Right, and that's what I'd assume people would do, or they would not let it get that tall. Yeah, I mean, I would have to hire somebody too, because I, I'm not going to climb 16 feet, but, yeah.
I think that probably comes from the power line regulations, if you've got a wire going over the alley, it's supposed to be 16 feet up.
Yeah, that I don't.
Well, they come and trim them anyway, the power companies will.
They may, yeah.
Because a lane comes to our place and turns them.
How often, do you know, is it yearly or every other?
I think it's every, they were just here.
Were they?
A few months ago.
Yeah.
They come in and scalp the turns, but, but the problem I have with it is, there's a certain, you know, efficiency of scale, that if the city hires somebody or has their own people go out and go, okay, clean up that alley to 16, to 16 feet, yeah, it'll take a while, but that's a lot cheaper in total than having you call somebody and do it, and you call somebody and me, and then besides, you're going to get, you're going to call them in, in April, and you're going to call them in August, and it's going to look, I'm, I'm just not sure, we shouldn't just have our guys do it.
I think one of the things with the 16 feet too, is that you don't have to do it every year then, but, and maybe it is too, I guess, I don't know, I'd have to think about that, but.
I'd like to see some hard numbers before we start.
Okay.
Getting into stuff that you're going to have problems enforcing, you know, what do we spend, and what's, how much time, how much money, I mean, just ballpark figures.
Yeah, okay, I can do that.
And how prevalent is it that it's a problem?
Like I said, they spend, you know, several days over the course of a year trimming it, and it is the property's responsibility, or the trees are, so our code doesn't state that, but that's.